Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the If you all just please would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll just take a minute for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, council, do we have any amendments of, or do we just need a resolution to approve our agenda?
I thought we were going to add.
I think we're going to add something, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
I had it in my hand.
Something about.
Fair Housing proclamation.
Proclamation.
Can I have a, can I have a motion to amend our new business to add Fair Housing?
Fair Housing, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Now, can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So this evening, council, we have a rather, I'm just gonna take a moment before I take a a motion for the consent agenda to make sure, it's a little long and dense, just wanna make sure we don't need to discuss anything on tonight's consent agenda. Is everybody comfortable with it?
I am.
Everybody good? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an approved consent agenda. We have a very special presentation tonight. This is the first time I get to do this as mayor, and I'm pretty happy about it. We have a young man in the back of the room who is our Chief of Police, who is David Cole, and he's been here for, I thought it was just a couple of years, but it turns out it's a lot longer than that, it's 15 years. And I just want everybody to know how much he is appreciated by all this, these members of this council, especially the mayor and staff here and the members of our community. We're just super pleased. So if I could please ask Chief Cole to join me at the front of the room?
Only feels like 14.
There's supposed to be something to present.
It's up here.
Right here. Here it is.
Oh, yes. Here we have. Chief Cole, thank you. Your service for our town.
Thank you for the support.
We're gonna go put it up.
All right, we'll see you then.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have our staff report, so we'll begin with our deputy town manager and planning director, Wes Haskett. Good evening, Wes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you. I have a brief report for y'all tonight for the month of March. There were a total of 47 permits issued, consisted of six zoning permits, 19 building permits, 18 trade permits, and four lot disturbance stormwater management permits. The total amount of fees for permits collected in March was $10,428.70. With respect to the Town Planning Board, they'll be meeting on April 18th, 5 o'clock here in the Pitt Center. They will consider ZTA 2202, text amendment application submitted by Quayble and Associates on behalf of Jing Guide LLC to amend the Town Code Section 36-26207(c), General Commercial District. That application was tabled from the last, last month's meeting. They will also consider zoning text amendment application, ZTA 2108. This is the signage ZTA that was considered and you all considered earlier this year. That'll be going back to them for Section 36-165. And lastly, ZTA 2204, a text amendment, another text amendment submitted by the town to amend Section 36-207(c), General Commercial District. Any questions?
Any questions for Wes?
Nope.
No.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it so much. Chief Cole?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The police department report for March 2022. As you can see, we, they responded and answered 1,334 calls for service for the month of March. Out of that, there were 10 incidents, which were actual crimes that are reported, with 16 offenses. That was a simple assault, an ID theft, stolen property, three drug equipment, one DWI, a hit and run. We had one death investigation, which was an overdose, in one found property, and we assisted in a chase with the other multiple jurisdictions. And two Chapter 20, which are vehicle traffic charges. We had three criminal arrests, one for the simple assault, one for the drugs, two drug for the DWI, as well as the Chapter 20, for a total of seven charges. Non citations. Officers conducted 59 traffic stops, and out of that, they wrote 14 citations and another 30 warning citations. Most of those were for parking in the right of way and failure to display. And we had three reportable motor vehicle accidents for the month of March. The call for services, I'd already told you, was 1,334 compared to last year. That's an increase of 791. We had 2,125 March of last year. And one more quick thing, if I may, just an update on our soon-to-be certified canine. And also our certified canine handler. Zach come up with the name, Officer Eames, Echo, which I thought was appropriate, being that it's gonna be his dog, I said, you're the one that should pick the name. Just to give you an idea, week one pretty much covered several days of administrative work, also included the care for and the first aid for the dog, as well as the proper feeding, watering. They covered signs and symptoms to be on the watch for for the canine, how to bathe and groom the canine, and then it was kind of a meet and greet with Echo and start the bonding process, loading up in the vehicle each day and driving around, getting used to each other. Week two, things were more advanced, more things had been added. They traveled to a couple of prisons in Virginia, insurance car lots, doing searches on vehicles, school, three schools, also fire stations. Must be drugs and fire stations. Actually, they were using some of their facilities that they have training when they hide the drugs in the cinder block walls and that. During week two, Echo is alerting on heroin as little as 3/10 of a gram.
Whoa.
So that's pretty impressive for, for a green canine. MDMA, which is ecstasy or molly, 3.4 grams. He's hitting on cocaine powder at 2.3 grams and crack cocaine, 1.4 grams. Obviously, the next thing he's gonna be imprinted with is methamphetamines, and of course, they try to get those, those, those numbers, those gram numbers down, so that they're working his nose even harder and harder. Canine Echo and Officer Eames also continued working on their obedience, and they're matching that with the obedience to German commands, which is normal. Week three, article searches. Canine Echo was able to find and locate a handgun in an open field with no assistance. He was working with his nose, which is what they expect, and not his eyes. By the time Echo graduates, he'll be able to locate a handgun shell casing in a large open field with no assistance. Week four, they started tracking, and along with continued daily narcotics and obedience training. And weeks, week five just started Monday, so it's an eight-week course, and he's done pretty well. Pretty impressed, so. Thank you.
That's great, too. Thanks for the update.
Yes, ma'am.
Look forward to having Echo in our community. And Officer Eames back. Next is our Fire Chief. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor, council. So first up, my general report for the month of March. Fire Department responded to 42 calls, which simply breaks down as one fire inside a structure, one brush fire at the marketplace, 24 EMS calls, one mutual aid vehicle accident just across the bridge, one vehicle accident with no injuries, one electrical wiring problem, which wound up being an HVAC problem, six service calls, one public service, and four alarms and two weather-related incidents, for a total of 42. And that breaks down to last year was 39, so we're just a touch ahead, which is kinda normal, so. Any questions on that? Just the monthly report?
Yeah, I just have on the Rescue and Emergency Medical Service, you had 26 calls there.
24 for EMS runs, yep.
The one I have here sits 26, but anyhow, how's that compared to last year? Do you know offhand?
Well, I can tell you. 32 last year. So, give or take, about the same. Any other questions on the monthly report? So I do have some information regarding our ISO rating, which we went through. That was January 19th, and it's just a quick 10-point slide here, so. So it's just the overall review of our ISO rating, which basically saves you money on your insurance for those that don't know. So just a quick breakdown on the rating system itself. The ISO rating is basically done by the North Carolina Office of State Fire Marshal, and it's supposed to be done every five years. So they're a little bit late this time, but they're well ahead of last time. It was over 10 years before last time in 2015. So they're, they're whittling it down little by little. You get a couple more inspectors, so. And it goes from a one being the best, all the way up to 10 being unrated, or I wouldn't say the worst, but not really recognized as a fire department. And it just basically goes as you would your school grades. 90 or more would be an A or Class 1. Class 2 is 8, 80 to 89. Class 3, 70 to 79, all the way down to Class 10, which is 0 to 999. So when they're looking at the inspection, it's kinda like the IRS coming to your house, and they wanna see every piece of paper that you own. That's pretty much what it's like. So they look at department operations, SOG's contracts, things like that, equipment, maintenance, things like testing of the ladders, testing hosing, all that stuff that's routine to us that we do every year. They're just checking to make sure you're doing it. And it goes all the way down to deployment, communication system, water system. It's made up of many different facets. Got you. So this is really the breakdown of our particular rating, and you can see the top portion is the Communications Department, Dare Central, which is 870 out of 10, which is pretty good. They're going with a new CAD system, so that number actually should come up next time. It should be even higher. The Fire Department's responsible for 50 total points out of the ratings, and you could see, pretty much, we're maxed out on everything, and there's really only four things that we didn't max out. One of them is an extra ladder, which I'm not really sure how many departments my size have an extra ladder laying around, but I don't see us ever getting that. The next one is deployment analysis, and that is basically geographical location of the station. The only way to improve that for us would be to have a crew, two crews, one at the east station. And that's just kind of our geographical, the way we're laid out in town. So the next one is the company personnel, and that is based on the volunteers that we have at the time, and that number fluctuates, as you know, I mean, close contact with all of you, that number fluctuates all the time, so it's up and down. And the last one is training. Each one of those individual numbers are broke down into, if it's training, it's broke down into hazmat company, officer training, driver training. So each section is broke down again, and has multi-facets as well. The water supply, which is Dare County for us, total of 40 points, they got 31.82. And then the water supply, or the community reduction, which is 4.71 for us, so a total of 78.91 points. So just a little history, go ahead, Sheila. Under Chief Harvey, for those of you who remember Chief Harvey, the department was an ISO Class 5 in 2015. And in this last inspection, we went up higher on a Class 3 again, at 78.91, moving up 6.56 points. So what does that mean for you, comparison? Good. There you go. So if you look at the departments around us, starting north, Duck is a 72.8, Kitty Hawk is an ISO 4, Cudle Hill's 3, Collington 3, Nags Head's the only two on the beach, and that's pretty incredible. They do a very good job there. And then, of course, us at 70 point, 78.91. So if you look at that, we're the second highest in Dare County. We're only 1.09 points away from an ISO Class 2, which, I know this is a lot of data for you, but for a volunteer, a small volunteer department, that's pretty incredible what our members are doing. And it is only two points, barely two points behind Nags Head. If you take that into consideration, and I talk to town manager about this, you take that into consideration, Nags Head's budget, they have two fully-staffed pieces. They have an engine and a ladder coming to every single call with eight guys, plus the chief and the deputy chief. We're only two points behind that, just to keep it in perspective. And all this was accomplished, of course, with the hurdle, or with the COVID hurdles, so that kinda added a wrench into things. Just a quick breakdown, we're one of 3521 in the nation and one of 121 in the state that are Class 3. So you can see, we're definitely at the top of the game. Got you. So everything in the departments that called, which are under my tenure as chief, has been due to the hard work of all our members and our volunteers. They're very dedicated, and they work countless hours. I've been very fortunate to enjoy a relationship, great relationship with the town and the trust and support with the mayor and town council. Over the past eight years, we've accomplished some great things together. So I'm looking forward, and I'm excited what the future holds for the department and some keep on improving. So, does anybody have any, I know that's kind of a lot, but if anyone has any questions, I'll try and answer them for you, so.
That's great information.
Congratulations.
Very well. Congratulations. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks for your efforts.
So no questions? People are like, we barely understand all that, but that's fine.
Well, now that you've shared all that with us, we're gonna be finding a way to get you that 1.9 points to get you to an ISO 2, so.
That's it. Kind of, when you're that close, it hurts more.
We're gonna have to do it now.
Have to get that ladder.
He's got something in mind.
Thank you, chief. Now our town manager, Cliff Auger.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Just two things I wanna briefly let you know about. The first is the update on the street improvement project. Back in March, we posted the RFP for the bids for the project. We opened the bids on March 31st, but unfortunately, there were no bids to open. So, but back on March 29th, after we had our pre-bid meeting, we sent out an addendum to address some of the questions that the two contractors that were present had. Yesterday, we, we posted a second addendum that is, has quite a bit of clarification. As you know, the, the project involves a lot of patching throughout town, and so this somewhat of a switch, as we've said before, kind of a shift from the full depth rebuilds that we've been doing to try and touch more streets with the same amount of money. And so we, we provided in this second addendum quite a lot of information. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a lengthy addendum that's got information about each one of the patches, the quantities, the, 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 how big the patch is. It's got conditions for each one of the patches, whether there's roots or cracking or, or any other issues. So I am, I know hope is not a course of action, but I am hopefully optimistic that we will see a bid. We, we're gonna open these again on April 15th. Short of that, there is an opportunity for us to, DOT is doing some similar work in the district. There's an opportunity, we might be able to piggyback with them. And if that fails, then I think we're gonna have to, we may split this up into two different projects, because we've got SoundView that's gonna receive more extensive overlay work, and then we can bid the project maybe separately the next go-around. So I hope to have good news in May.
Did SEPI have any help for you on this?
Yes.
Did they help with the addendum? I mean, or were they, had they ever seen no bid before?
You know, I, I don't know that they had, that they haven't before. I, I know it's, when you only have two, that are traditionally two contractors to do this work, and this is new work for them, it's, the learning curve's a little steeper than I was anticipating. But they, they put this whole list of information together.
Well, I think one of the concerns they have, because I attended that pre-bid meeting, was they understood the structural warranty side of it. They were concerned about the aesthetic side of it.
That's right.
So they were concerned that they do the project, and they were, the phone, the phone would be calling, people would be calling them because you didn't do all the job right. So that, I think, had a concern there.
It did. But hopefully, we can get past.
Yes.
Hopefully, we can pass it. And then, as you know, last night, the engineers, beach, beach nourishment engineers were here. They're actually, there's one, two, three, four, seven projects gonna, beach nourishment projects that are gonna take place this coming summer from, all the way from Buxton to Duck. CPE was here, along with two representatives from Weeks Marine, and I gave, they gave what I thought was a very good overview of the project, and there were about 12 people that attended, another five listening in on YouTube, and I checked, and we've had that, the YouTube, the video of last night's presentation is online now, and there's been about 26 views so far of that, so hopefully the world will get out. So, but they, they went over the project, how we got to where we are, why we got to where we are, and what folks can expect, right down to the backup bells and the noise, and how long it takes for the construction areas to move. You know, this is our first full project, so we had several folks that, I don't, you know, that just didn't, didn't know what to expect. But the schedule is still such that the Weeks will actually start their work in Kitty Hawk, then move to Cudle Hill, and then in mid-August, they'll start staging in July here in Southern Shores, and then in mid-August, they'll start the project that hopefully, again, will run us about 35 to 40 days. So.
That's great. Thanks, Cliff. Anybody have any questions for Cliff? I hope people will take advantage of the YouTube and, and get information, and we have information on our website, and we're gonna have updating information as it becomes available on the website.
That's right.
Also, the county's got, was it the love of the beach?
Yeah, more beach to love. I think that's where folks should start. And then, on that site, you'll see the seven different projects, the site-specific projects that you can go to from there.
It was a really good presentation. I thought all of us were here, except Leo had a conflict. And I thought it was very well-attended for Monday night, and we had a pretty robust discussion with some questions, which I thought was good. It is gonna be a very busy summer, folks, in, in many, many ways, and beach nourishment is just gonna be part of that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is general public comment. No, excuse me, town attorney. Oh, we have a guest attorney this evening.
We do. I'm Robert Hobbs, filling in for my law partner, Ben Gallup, who had another commitment. I'm a longtime member of the same law firm and also a resident, longtime resident of Southern Shores.
Thank you, Robert, for being here tonight.
Glad to be here. I don't really have a report, per se, but I'm certainly available for any questions that you might have.
We're gonna press you into service here shortly. Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Robert's also my neighbor, so there you go. Now, public comments. Sheila, do you have anybody signed up? Sorry. Thank you. Eric Noor. Welcome, Eric. Good evening.
Good evening. I prepared some remarks for the ZTA 2203 later, but I'd noticed on the agenda, there was a mention of ATCA 2203, similar. So I don't, I don't think it was before that, so I wanna make a couple of comments. I'm gonna say jump ahead, but trying to jump, get out in front. That, not the whole town of Southern Shores has quality cell phone service, especially behind the dunes in the, in the woods. And I'd like to come out as opposed to any significant policies that would make it more difficult for wireless providers to expand their service. I do understand the aesthetic aspect of it, but I feel like there's some other measures and items that kind of outweigh, especially when it comes to safety. Get back in the, some of the streets back there, there's, there's no signal, so if you were to get hurt walking the dog or call 911, because you have a cardiac event or jogging, get hit by a car, things like that, it might be difficult to summon some help. I don't know that that's happened, but I do know that there are places where we can't use our phones back there. Also, ocean safety, we don't have lifeguards all up and down the beach. I know it's been difficult at times just to call back to the house, to have someone bring down some more beverages. So I can only imagine what would happen if we needed to call 911 or, or a lifeguard isn't immediately present. Safety is my main concern. I'll go into detail at the public hearing with some other items, but again, just wanna make sure I state that I'm not opposed, I'm not in favor of being too restrictive to our cell phone providers. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Steve Goos? Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening, Mayor and town council and townspeople of our beloved town. And we are very proud to announce, I'll make this short, the fifth Southern Shores Historic Flat Top Tour on Saturday, April 30th, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And basically, it's a tour that benefits the Outer Banks Community Foundations Fund that's called the Flat Top Preservation Fund, so that people understand where the funds are going to. The building right next to us at 13 Skyline Road was bequeathed to the Outer Banks Community Foundation in 2008 or '09 with the idea that they had to keep it in perpetua. So this fund is established so that that building will be kept up in terms of its upkeep and so forth, like to have a permanent home for the great foundation founded by Andy Griffith and others way back when. At any rate, that's what it is, and that's where the fund goes. So we have a tour, and it's $10 a person, two for 15. Tickets are Tickets are sold at 156 Wax Myrtle or next door. And we get about 400 people come, and we make a couple of grand. And it goes to a real good cause. We have a great history. Every building in this town was a flat top. From the '40s to about the mid-'60s, things started to change, and now there's only 25 left. So come see them on April 30th. And also, it piggybacks with a, the Southern Shores Community Association is having a workday that morning, and they're culminating with a potluck, I guess, around noon. So everybody finishes that, they're going to come to the tour. So everything is going to kind of work together that day. So we ask you to join us. We're very proud. My wife Sally's the one who really does it. I'm just kind of helping her. So anyhow, I just wanted to announce that. I have a group thing, I'll leave it in the back if anybody wants to see it. So it's really, come see a real historic. And I will say that one of your council members was so flattered by Flat Top, he built one for himself. And that's kind of how it goes. So thank you all very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda is old business. Cliff, did you want to? Mid-Curry Tech Bridge?
Mid-Curry Tech Bridge. We've got, I think, just about all the, the neighboring municipalities have or are going to sign the resolution that you passed at your last meeting. The home builders have signed it, the property managers tomorrow night. The Visitors Bureau on April 28th. So we're getting good support. The plaintiffs for the lawsuit on the bridge, the plaintiffs' briefs were due actually today. And so Ben's gonna, he's been in communication with Department of Justice. There are further discussions about, you know, how he can best advise you all when it comes to whether or not you should consider filing an amicus brief or not. If you do decide to do that, that's going to be due on May 12th. And so at this point with, you know, that, of course, comes at an expense. And so at this point, without a mid-month scheduled, we think you're probably going to need to schedule a special meeting so you can discuss maybe next week. So you can discuss with Ben, you know, how to go about filing this, whether or not you should do that. Because time is kind of drawn short here with filing of the 12th. So I don't know if Robert has more to add to that, but right now, I think you should consider, you should consider scheduling a special meeting next week, maybe the 14th, which I think is Thursday. You can schedule it. If for whatever reason you need to cancel, you can do that. But at least you've got it scheduled, and you'll be prepared.
The only comments that I would have would be that I think there's an idea that the various managers that might be approached could discuss with their respective councils about some cost-sharing or participation with that brief. And of course, even though it is a May 12th deadline, it's, it would take a while to put all that together and research, put noted, typed, and formatted to the Four Circuit Court of Appeals formatting requirements. And so it's not something that we could just push out in a couple of days. So I think that's why Cliff is and Ben are suggesting maybe a special meeting so that Ben can personally give you further advice. He's much better up to speed on that case than I am. And he would be the one who would be running that brief. So that's basically what I know at this point on it.
And we know Ben is available on the 14th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Counsel, do you have availability on the 14th?
Good time.
Yeah.
I know that I am out of town, so this will be a four-member council event.
That gets around the meeting.
It's my birthday, so.
Oh, my God.
April 14th. I can, I'm working all day, anyway.
In the morning, yeah, what time? 9:00 a.m.? Yeah, as long as it's over by 11:00. Oh.
Yeah, I'll cancel out of there. There's a boat club gam breakfast at 8:30, which I've already committed to, so I'll pay that bill if I have to get out of it.
Would that be done by 10:00?
How about the 13th? Are you in town on the 13th?
No.
No. Doesn't matter.
13th's fine with me.
What's Ben's availability? But he gave us the 14th for a reason.
About 11:00 a.m. on the 14th.
Yep, we can cut that one.
I can't, I can't do it then.
This is always what happens.
Busy people.
Calendars.
You want to call Belgium and tell them, I'm not available. It's fine with me.
You're going to Belgium?
No, it's on the phone.
What's the next time slot you have?
Before nine, after, after 11:00, be 12:00. Anytime after 12:00.
Let's do 12:00.
You know.
You want to do 12:00?
About 12:15. Give me five minutes to get up.
Or do you want to do what?
Doesn't matter. 12:15, earlier the better, probably.
Let's do 12:30, so you don't have to rush it.
12:30? All in favor?
Aye. Those are going to be.
April 14th?
April 14th.
There will be four council members there.
Okay.
April 14th at 12:30.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Cliff.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have new business. Do we want to do?
Let's do the.
The fair housing before we do the public hearings? Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, and you guys can move on.
So these guys don't have to? I know you guys are enjoying this.
As if they've never set one before.
And we're just going to inconvenience a couple of people who are here for the first public hearing. We're going to get through this really quick, though. Who am I recognizing for this? Am I recognizing Willow?
Doug.
Come on up.
Doug Brenly.
Doug, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Doug Brenly. I'm the president of the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. The association now has over 1,200 members in residence, residential and commercial sales, property management, as well as lenders, insurers, appraisers, inspectors, and other affiliate members. With me today is of our CEO, Will Kelly, and our Government Affairs Director, Porter Graham. Porter's here. And the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force Chair, Jimmy Anderson, not here. The board recently approved several initiatives set forth by the DEI Task Force on fair housing and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that's why I'm here today. We would like to present, all of you, a couple of copies of the National Association of Realtors Annual Magazine, On Common Ground. I have them right here. I'll give them to the clerk. This latest issue focuses on addressing the housing shortage and affordable housing issues, which we're all familiar with here in the Outer Banks. We'd also like to make you aware that April 11th marks the 54th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. Outer Banks Association of Realtors is committed to ensuring that all prospective home buyers, sellers, and tenants are treated fairly and equally without discrimination. To further bring attention to fair housing, we ask that you join us in proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month. You should, if you should like to consider that, please. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Here is this proclamation, Fair Housing Month proclamation. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11, 1968, enshrined in the federal law, the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas the town of Southern Shores is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair housing and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, environment, are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists, and many communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now, for there be resolved that the town council has thereby declared the month of April 22 as Fair Housing Month. And the town of Southern Shores is an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents in the town of Southern Shores. Thank you for this opportunity to bring this to you today.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Appreciate it so much. Anybody have any questions for Doug?
No.
If everybody's okay, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the Fair Housing Month proclamation as just read by Mr. Brenly.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, so very much. Okay, I'm going to call on our guest attorney, Mr. Robert Hobbs, for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, this time, we will open the hearing, a public hearing on ZTA 22-01, a zoning text amendment application submitted by the town of Southern Shores to amend town code section 36-202D6 maximum allowable lot coverage, section 36-203D6 maximum allowable lot coverage, section 36-204D6 maximum allowable lot coverage, section 36-205D6 maximum allowable lot coverage, and section 36-206D6 maximum allowable lot coverage. I'd like to remind the council that during this consideration, you will be sitting as a legislative body. And now, at this time, we will open the public hearing. And I'll now call on Wes Haskett to make a presentation on behalf of the town staff.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. Good evening again, Council. Next item on your agenda is ZTA 2201. The proposed amendments are being proposed by town staff as a result of feedback provided by property owners and contractors regarding the open-slided deck exemption from lot coverage requirements. This was adopted in September of 2018. Currently, open-slided decks that allow water to penetrate through to pervious material not exceeding a total of 25% of the total footprint area of the attached single-family dwelling can be exempted from the maximum lot coverage requirement in the RS1 zoning district. This exemption is only made available to an applicant for a building or zoning permit for a single-family dwelling or attached open-sladed deck over pervious material upon presentation of a survey with all applicable requirements, including plan certification for a lot disturbance and stormwater management permit as described in subsection 36-1713. The exemption only applies to new open-slided decks and only in the RS1 zoning district. And it's only if, when it allows water to penetrate through to pervious material, and also only if an engineered stormwater plan that demonstrates compliance with the lot disturbance requirements, i.e. that the property will retain all stormwater generated by a 1 and 1/2-inch rain event, and not adversely affect any stormwater management system previously constructed by the town or on adjacent properties. Since the current exemption became effective, property owners and contractors have voiced concerns about not allowing the same exemption for existing open-sladed decks. In some instances, existing open-sladed decks were demolished and rebuilt in order to qualify for the exemption. And when I say rebuilt, demolished, and they submitted a building permit application for, and were given a building permit to build a new deck, therefore getting the exemption along with the engineered stormwater plan. The proposed amendments provided by town staff would allow existing and proposed open-sladed decks not exceeding a total of 25% of the total footprint area of a permitted single-family dwelling on the same lot to qualify for the open-sladed deck exemption in all of the town's residential zoning districts and the government institutional district following submitted of an engineered stormwater plan. With respect to the town's land use plan, town staff has determined that it's consistent with policy two. With respect to a recommendation, town staff has determined, again, that the amendments are consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan. And town staff recommends approval of the proposed ZTA. And this would be the 21522 version. There are two different versions in your packets, one being the 21522 version recommended by staff, the other being the 22222 version recommended by the town planning board. At the February 22nd, 2022 planning board meeting, the board unanimously, 5-0, recommended approval of the 22222 version. That version states that up to 250 square feet of open-sladed decks that allow water to penetrate through to pervious material shall not contribute to lot coverage instead of 25% of the total footprint area of a permitted single-family dwelling. The board thought that putting a cap of 250 square feet of exempted open-sladed deck was fair, as opposed to allowing more square footage of exempted deck area for those with larger houses. Prior to arriving at their recommended language, the board also discussed applying the 25%, current 25% and proposed in staff's version to the enclosed, to only the enclosed living space area of a single-family dwelling, as opposed to the entire footprint, which would include non-heated area instead of the footprint. Town staff would have no objections to that limitation. But with respect to the planning board, Chairperson Ward is here this evening, and he's going to talk to y'all a little bit and go over more of what the board discussed at the February 22nd meeting. That concludes my report. Y'all have any questions at this time for me? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, will there be a presentation by the planning board?
Mayor, Council, I don't want to be jumping in front of anybody with public comments, so is this the appropriate time?
This is a good time.
Thank you. Brief history on lot coverage, and I'll keep it brief. July 7th, 1981 was our first zoning ordinance in the town here. We were incorporated in '79. It took two years. That's where the 30% lot coverage started. In March of 1995, it was amended to define lot coverage and lasted until September 5th, 2018, which is approximately 23 and 1/2 years. The March definition of lot coverage was listed as the portion of the lot area expressed as a percentage that is occupied and obstructed by any structure above the ground, including, but not limited to, buildings, decks, parking areas, accessways, sidewalks, roadways, and all accessory uses and structures requiring location on or above the ground. It stayed that way until September 5th, 2018. In the meantime, the, the town had Code Right come in and do a survey in their package of items that we were working with them on to improve our zoning ordinances and town code in general. Code Right survey, which was in February of 2016, there were approximately 750 responses to that survey that asked, should the town increase the maximum allowable lot coverage? Of those responses, 62% disagreed or strongly disagreed that we should increase lot coverage. 30% agreed or strongly agreed that we should increase lot coverage, and 8% were undecided. So what, why am I up here tonight? That's the question. We, as a planning board, felt like maybe what I voted on and what the mayor voted on when she was sitting on the planning board was something that, I don't know, in retrospect... when she was sitting on the planning board was something that, I don't know, in retrospect, had I dug in a little bit deeper, I wouldn't have voted for it, probably. Because I can give you an example of what's sitting up there on that screen, and this is very hypothetical sketch, but it's doable. You've got a 4,000-square... Well, to start off, there's 20,000 square feet of lot there. It's a fairly typical average-sized lot in Southern Shores. Of that 20,000 square feet, if you strictly did the 30% lot coverage, which has been done since 1981, you would glean out 6,000 square feet of hard structure on that lot. So if you had a 4,000-square-foot footprint house, 1,000 square feet of pool and surround, 1,000 square feet of driveway area, you add all those up, that's 6,000 square feet, which gets you the 30% lot coverage. Now, according to what we passed, what I passed, what I voted for in September of 2018, says that you can build an additional 1,000-square-foot open-slatted deck, and it does not contribute to lot coverage. Seems excessive to me. And I'm telling you, in 1981, in 1995, and I don't think, I mean, I'm speaking for myself, but in 2018, it wasn't about stormwater runoff. Aesthetics. Do you want to cram another 1,000 feet of coverage on a 20,000-square-foot lot? That's how you can do it, right there. Now, if we can equate that over, Sheila, to something that we can wrap our heads around, and this is what we talked about in the planning board in February, which led us to decide that this was probably something that needed to be changed. This is at 48 Ocean Boulevard. Sheila, can you toggle back and forth between the GIS and that? That's the property right there. It's oceanfront. I built it for my family. It's four years old. Now, you can go back. Thanks. First-floor heated area of that house is 3,064 square feet. The screen porch is covered by a roof. It's 253 square feet. The covered decks are by a roof, or 933 square feet. It gets you to a total footprint area of 4,250 square feet. If you take 25% of that amount, you get 1,062 square feet of free lot coverage if you use open-slatted decking. This house only has 861 square feet of decking, so they wouldn't get the full 1,000 square feet. But the way this ordinance reads right now, you can back out 861 square feet, and Sheila, if you can go to that picture, on either side of that walkway going out to the dune platform would be a prime spot on either side, and there's room there, and I can separate it from the house. I'm within 60 foot of the veg line for Kama. I can put that 861 square feet in the hard surface. Is that what we want to do? The planning board said it's excessive. So we batted around what we thought was fair and equitable, and we came up with a decent compromise of, rather than doing the 25% of the footprint, which, by the way, before we even started talking about the second version of 250 square feet, we had a strong suggestion that it would be the total footprint area if the 25% would stay in effect. It would not be the total footprint area. It would be the conditioned space area. So Wes made that point, and we started off looking at that. But as things evolved, we felt strongly that 860 square feet of... And to back up a little bit, that lot coverage on that house and decks and everything that I built four years ago is maxed out. It's 29.75%. So we're there. But tomorrow, I could start, you know, thinking about building 861 square feet of building on that. And it's just, the planning board thought it was excessive, and I regret ever having voted for it because I didn't do this when Elizabeth and I voted for it three, four years ago. But that's the real story right there. And it's being done in a couple of properties over on the Soundside, Soundview Loop, and King Fisher. They have used that 25% much to their advantage, and they've gotten about 750 square feet of free lot coverage on the credit for open-slatted decking. So they've increased the lot coverage by a fair amount. If you go back, Sheila, to the first picture, that... If you could do that, if you could add 1,000 square feet right there and not have to pay for it in lot coverage, that gets us not to 30% lot coverage, but 35% lot coverage. And you can dial down increments. If you did 250 square feet, as we proposed, the planning board, you'd be at about 31 and 1/4%. If you did 500 square feet, it would be 32.5%. But, folks, 1,000 is excessive. Anyway, we ask you to consider, the planning board asked town council to consider an alternative. We're here to tweak this thing because I think it was ludicrous, and the planning board thought it was ludicrous, that you had to tear down something in order to get credit for it. That made no sense, and we voted for that, too. So while we're tweaking, we decided that 250 square feet was a pretty fair number that we could give credit across the board without having to do all these calculations, and everybody would be treated fairly. So that's where we landed with the other ZTA, the 2222. Anyway, it certainly, in our proposed retweaking of this ordinance, the 250 square feet was the number we came up with that we thought was fair. So with that, that's where the planning board's thought process was. And do you have any questions of what we engaged in?
I guess I would just like to say thanks to whoever was involved in this effort to take a look at older homes like mine that have open-slatted decks. And we did have a contractor tell us that we had, that what we should do is to tear our deck down and build a new one with the same footprint, but he even said we could use our old boards. So it just didn't make a lot of sense. So I appreciate...
And I went in and actually argued with Wes yesterday. I said, "I don't even see this. I'm not seeing this in the original ordinance that you had to tear down anything." But he assured me that I was wrong, and he was right. But that's crazy. I mean, having to do that. You voted for it. I voted for it. Did you realize that you were voting for that?
I bet there's more errors in the town ordinances that I voted for that we still have to make fixes for because, you know, it's not an easy, straightforward process to try to adopt ordinances.
No, it's not.
There's unforeseen consequences, and yeah, that's what we charged you with trying to fix. What we found was an error, and we appreciate that you did that.
I think in your circumstance, Paula, you're living what can be done at 48 Ocean Boulevard. I mean, if... There's a reason that a lot of these houses that have pool houses don't have any accessway to the beach. They used up all their lot coverage. So now we can take that 4,000-square-foot and turn it into 1,000 square feet of dune deck and walkway because they get credit for it. We disagree as a planning board, so if I can help answer any questions, just holler. I'll stick around.
But just to be clear, when we say deck, this would also include any walkways, anything...
Right. Anything that's counted to lot coverage, like a walkway or a dune deck, anything that counts towards lot coverage that's open-slatted decking, yes. We're adamantly opposed to tearing anything out in order to get the credit and put it back. That makes no sense. So anyway, I'll take a seat, and if anybody else is speaking, be glad to get back up here. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, if there are any members of the public who'd like to address the application, if you'll come forward and make your presentation, state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Stacia LeBlanc, and we just built a home last year, a retirement home in 10th Avenue. Excuse me. And what... I guess what concerns me is that if we're talking about slatted deck that allows water to pass through, it shouldn't count the same as a cement patio that doesn't allow any water to walk through. I think that, I think historically, been so concerned about it being overdeveloped that there's not enough sort of environmental sustainable materials and policies and things that are in place to encourage people to use more permeable materials. So I think that it's... I think it gets lost, like when you said you thought it was a hard, another hard surface. Well, it's not. It's actually something that the water can pass through. So, and this, to me, I just read that this was changing it so that you didn't have to tear it down and do it, because I can see that phrase in the language, that rather, if you have a home already, you can then, you know, expand or build or rebuild it or whatever. So I think I agree with that. The 250 square feet, I guess, just seems like almost nothing to me. And the other thing is that you have to have it connected to your house. You can't just go and build a screen porch, you know, with slatted decking. Well, it couldn't be a screen because it had a roof. But anyway, you wouldn't be able to just build a deck for the heck of it at 1,000 square feet. So I guess I'm in favor of the change, and I think that the town would be doing a lot of homeowners in the area a favor if you would consider more about the impact of the stormwater, which is really why you have lot coverage. I know the development, and you don't want it, big, high buildings, big buildings blocking our views, but it's really, also hasn't taken into account, is it really harming, is it helping stormwater, you know, management? So anyway, just wanted to add my two cents in there. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Other members of the public who'd like to address this, come forward, please, and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Duke Garrity. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Ata Banks Home Builders Association, and our committee has talked this over and looked at the ordinance, and we're in favor of the staff's version. I'm not going to look a gift horse in the mouth. Only in Dare County. And when I moved here 30 years ago, I couldn't understand why open-slatted decks were considered lot coverage. Kama doesn't consider them lot coverage. They don't consider the wet areas of a swimming pool lot coverage. We have got to learn that this is not really a stormwater ordinance. This is an aesthetic ordinance. And the idea of, and I've gone through this with Dare County, planning director has said to me many times, we countilled the open-slatted decks because somebody could come on a Saturday and close that in, and then we'd have lot coverage with a roof over it. And it doesn't seem to be happening. Maybe it happened in the '80s, and I don't know, but not many people anymore coming in on Saturdays and closing in a room. They put a screen rooms on the construction into the house. So I am surprised that it's still going in. Dare County set a public hearing yesterday. They're increasing their lot coverage on a home that has an accessory dwelling unit on it to 38%. We need to encourage some more affordable housing, some type of, any type really, affordable housing where we are right now. So yesterday, they said if you're going to put an accessory dwelling in there for a year-round resident, then lot coverage will be extended to 38%, and that's what they're proposing. I just didn't understand the penalty that we impose on people, and we call it a stormwater ordinance, but it's not a stormwater ordinance. It's an open-slatted deck on top of permeable ground underneath it. So I'm not going to sit here and debate all the things that go, but let's call it an aesthetic ordinance, and let's give people the use of using their property longer and get full use and quiet enjoyment of their property. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Would anybody else like to speak, please? Come forward. Seeing none, any follow-up from planning board or from staff? Any remaining questions from council?
I guess I have a question, not being the most mathematically inclined person. What concerns me is the 250 square feet, if that includes walkways, which a lot of us have to have pretty long walkways to the beach, so that counts. I think the point about encouraging people to use environmentally friendly materials is a really good point. We have a long walkway from the front of our house to the back, and then from the back to the beach. I don't know how big a deck we could have if we had to still count that walkway. I mean, is that... Andy? Matt?
Would you like Mr. Haskett to address?
Wes, sure. I mean, I don't know what that leaves you with. It seems small to me.
The 250 square feet?
Yeah.
I mean, it could be. I guess it depends on what... You're talking about a walkway for 250 square feet of walkway?
But you're saying the 250 would include your deck and the walkway?
The open-slatted deck would apply to exactly what it says. Anything that has open-slatted decking. It could be steps. It could be a walkway. It could be the actual deck. So if you have a house with a rear open-slatted deck with a walkway that's all attached and runs out, I mean, currently today, you could apply for the exemption, but it's okay. But the 250 square feet, it includes anything that's open. If you were to go with that, it would be anything that is open-slatted.
So for a walkway, it'd be about 4 feet wide by 60 feet long. So that probably wouldn't get you to the beach from your backyard.
And then you couldn't have a deck.
And then you couldn't have a deck, and then you couldn't have...
I mean, you could have a deck. It just wouldn't count against you.
Yeah, it would count for lot coverage.
So if I'm a homeowner, and I'm in that position, and I'm replacing my deck, maybe I'd replace it with something that water wouldn't go... I'd replace it with something that water wouldn't go through because some deck materials are not open slatted.
If you're going to be counted against you already.
If it's going to count against me already, why wouldn't I just, you know, why wouldn't I just put a roof over it or make it concrete or whatever? So.
Thanks, Wes.
That's my only concern.
Come, come forward, please.
I'm not in charge. I don't know.
Sheila, can you pull, pull that GIS up again? Thank you. That house right there is at max lot coverage. It's 29.7% filled up with hard structure, which is the driveway, the roof, the swimming pool, the walkway out to the dune deck. That all is counting towards that 29.75 square feet. They have 861 square feet of open slatted decking credit. So you could take that, you can leave everything that's there and add an additional 861 square feet of hard surface, i.e. poolhouse, tiki bar, you know, whatever you can get in that, that zone on either side of that walkway, you could do with the open slap decking credit of 860 square feet that would not be counted against you as lot coverage. It is counted against them right now as lot coverage, but with the ordinance as it's sitting today, it would not. I mean, does that clarify your, you, you, you could take and build a pool house similar to one that's to your north on either side of that walkway because you've got 861 square feet of-
Would it be past the limits of disturbance of the dune though?
I think-
You're pretty much at the gamma line at the edge of it. And then 130, 130 setback is at the house line.
You could, I mean, you could, you might not get 861 square feet, but I guarantee you get 250, which is a tiki bar or whatever. It can't be connected to the house. But you can definitely do it. I mean, you know, we're, we're at 95% buildout, close. 30% has been something that everybody has had to adhere to. Matt's new house, this house, everybody's house. I mean, yeah, do it, I mean, shoot, we could go to 38 like the county. Is that what we want to do? I don't think so. I think we're a little different here than, you know, Dare County. And, you know, the, the people, I think if they would realize what that ordinance states today, they might not be in favor of the aesthetics of it. I, I, I don't buy what we're doing here is stormwater runoff. It's aesthetics, putting more on a lot than 30%. So anyway, thank you.
Kate, come forward, please. State your name and address, please.
My name is Mark LeBlanc. I live at 910th Avenue, Southern Chores. Thank you. One question, I, this is probably me. I'm losing track of what the proposed amendment actually is tonight. Is there going to be a cap on to 250 square feet? Or is, is that a consideration for-
There are two nearly identical amendments. One has a 25% credit and the other is a 250 square foot cap.
Okay. I see that. And then I would, the other thing I would observe is that the particular slatted deck part does require that it's attached to the house. So if you're concerned about creating a tiki bar or some other structure like that, my understanding is to, to get to the slatted deck part, if you were using a slatted deck, it would have to be attached to the house.
Wes, was that, that was struck, wasn't it?
The current law, which states that it has to be attached, the amendment that the proposal would actually establish that the deck would not have to be attached.
So for example, a, a air conditioning stand generally slatted, but not attached to the house unless you count the, the condenser line or something, would- It does, but it's not connected to the house or it is connected to, or doesn't have to be.
HVAC is a good way.
Yeah, right. Okay. The other observation I'd make is I understand the point about aesthetics, but I think if you look at the resolutions dropped in previous zone, zone lot coverage things, they were, they were tailored towards both development and stormwater management. And what I seem to be hearing tonight is that the real reason for this is aesthetic, in which case then the, the council, I guess, would go on record saying, well, we're more concerned about the aesthetic or that's our principal reasoning. And thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Would any other member of the public like to address this proposal? Seeing none, any remaining questions from council? Okay. Seeing none, then at this time, the public hearing is closed. The council may now deliberate on this. And just as a reminder, you have two optional versions. One's the staff February 15th version. The other is the planning board February 22nd version. I'll also remind you that in order to adopt an ordinance on the first reading, there'll need to be four votes in favor to adopt it on the first reading. If it's less than four and it's still approved, then it would come back to you on second reading. So you may now deliberate.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. I'll just start off by saying thank you to staff and the planning board for what we wanted to do was fix a problem. And we, we know there's more problems in that code that we still have to fix, but we're, we're making progress. So that's, that's very much appreciated. I do appreciate also the, the extent to which you all deliberated, the amount of effort and give and take and listening that you did. I know I have a long history with the planning board and, and now this council, maybe too long. And, but, but, but my, my feeling is, I, I always tell people that I am an advocate of private property rights. And, and I'll, and I still am. Now, we have a town code that puts some guardrails on those private property rights. And I'm fine with that as well. I was always fine with the 30%. If, if we need to, I don't know what it would take to, to change my mind from the 30%, but I still can't change my mind on an open slatted deck allows water to penetrate through and hit the ground beneath it and therefore should not count against lot coverage. So I felt that way in 2018 and I feel that way now. So that's, that's where I am with it. So council members, who would like to go next? Anyone? Matt?
He always looks at me.
Each one lives over a daily window.
I, I have used this credit for clients in the past on new construction. If you're building a single-story home on some of the 18,000 square foot lots, it comes in handy to try to, I mean, I don't think you could fit a driveway, a single-story, three-bedroom home and a pool without using this credit. And even at that point, the pool deck is open slatted. So I'm, I'm in favor of the staff version.
What was that?
I'm in favor of the staff version, February 15th.
Staff version is what he-
25%.
Yeah, 25%. Anybody else?
Well, having built several homes and building the one here was the most difficult. And I didn't know what lot coverage was at that time. And we had to make lots of, lots of modifications to meet, to meet the requirements for the town, which was good. I understood that so far off the canal, you know, so far from the street and all that. So she didn't get what she wanted. So, I mean, but it's okay. It, you know, but, and then there's height requirement as well. So, but I think the open slotted is important because we went with a lot of that to make sure that we didn't mess up the ground coverage. But I think the recommendation from the town makes sense to me. Okay. I mean, I understand both parties here. I really do, from the aesthetics. But I'm, I'm, I'm pretty convinced that the, the staff recommendation will work.
Paul, Leo?
I'm trying to figure out, is there any other alternative method to combine somewhere meet in the middle with the two? I'm favoring the staff recommendation that, because of, I'm an advocate of private property rights as well. And I guess, is there somewhere in the middle there? I don't know. 250 sounds awful small to me.
Wes, did you want to?
I was just going to say, one of the other, what the planning board discussed initially, what we would have staff that have no objections to do is the making, instead of 25% of the footprint, the 25% of the enclosed living space area. That would limit it somewhat more.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
Sure. Thank you.
Andy, on your, your application, how would that, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, do, I'm sorry, do we want to reopen the public hearing?
I, I wasn't anticipating, Senator Powell, asking me-
I'm out of order. That wouldn't be the first time. It won't be the last.
Yeah. Could we settle somewhere, Leo?
Well, I just, I just want to figure out is, you know, is there somewhere, you know, when you negotiate, you get something in the middle somewhere?
So Wes just provided you a somewhere.
Yeah. And I can, and I can, I can live with basing it on what Wes just mentioned.
Okay.
That would, that would restrict it.
Would you like to make a motion and see if you get a second?
Well-
It's been on the books as 25% of the, of the footprint area as is. And it's not like there's a herald of complaints coming forth. I mean, there's houses have been built that you might not be aware of that have used that credit. And it's, if you reduce it further more to the heated area, I mean, the age-old debate of lot coverage is that stormwater is aesthetics. That's a 30-year debate in Dare County. The 30% came from state stormwater manuals in the 80s when Dare County started adopting ordinances. It was, you cover 30% of the lot. You don't need any other stormwater management. The other 70% can provide a take-up. Town started using it as an aesthetic control or an anti-development control as we, in my mind, lot coverage is a stormwater issue. How much are you covering? How much water are you shedding to your neighbors? There's a part of me, I think 25% of the footprint area is a good compromise because really that deck is not shedding any water to your neighbor in any direction.
Well, that's true.
Or contributing to the street runoff.
As long as the rain can get through the slats of the boards. That's, that's what we're talking about.
I mean, and-
The water stays on your-
The joke is if you can rim your property in six-foot fence on the property line, what happens inside that property fence is your property. I mean, it's a, if the neighbor can't see it because you can fence it off, why are we worrying so much about how large the playground is that my kids climb on? That's sort of my perspective. If it doesn't contribute to stormwater and adversely impact our waterway, our storm water management on the roads or your adjacent neighbor, the property owner, so.
Well, and I guess I'm, I'm really not in favor of just considering the enclosed area because how does that impact people who don't have mega houses? You know, it restricts your ability to build outside of your house.
Suppose you like outside space as good as you like-
Let's say you have a thousand square foot porch that counts against you as coverage because of the roof area, but you only get the credit applied to your, your, you know, eight, 900 square foot footprint. I mean, it's, trying to do a 4,000 square foot home on a 20,000 square foot lot with parking and lot and a pool and driveway, the example's sketched. I don't, I don't think there, there was any parking in that driveway. So really, you'd either have to lose the pool or you'd lose part of the footprint of the house. And in reality, the largest credit, I think, I was able to get at the largest house was like 2,700 feet heated area footprint. And I think we got like an 800 credit because we had a little carport attached to it. I mean, it's, and I don't think any neighbors thought that that was overbuilt for the property.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the staff recommended ordinance, ZTA 2201, dated 2/15/2022. Second.
As is.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
No, I'll change my position. I mean, I'm trying to, was trying to figure out, is there, have we looked at all the alternatives? Because once we do this, we gotta, we're gonna all have to live with it. Not so much me, because my house is built. But like Matt, you're building a house or somebody's got a new lot, you know, I just don't want to cause some havoc down the road and think, God, we should have done differently.
Well-
Well, if you could soothe your mind, it's been in place for four years for all new construction. So.
It's been in place four years for all new construction. But those of us who have older houses have had every inch of every piece on our property counted in lot coverage.
Yep.
So when we try to add a bedroom or pop up the front of the house, we run into lot coverage issues with a small house. And I live next door to enormous houses that were built under, you know, within the last few years. So I'd like to give the existing homeowners of older houses as much of a benefit as new construction has had for the last few years.
And Leo, to address your concern, we can always fix it.
I hope so.
So we have a motion and a second. Everyone ready to vote? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are now ready for a brief public hearing number two.
It's actually, the first is a consideration of TCA 22-03.
Okay. Sorry, counsel, it's page 70 in your books. Is someone going to address us about this?
Just you.
Just me? Wes, yay.
Thank you again, Mayor. The next item on your agenda is consideration of TCA 22-03. And this kind of goes hand in hand with the next item on your agenda, which is ZTA 22-03. Both of them address undergrounding requirements. With TCA 22-03 needing to come first if we want to move forward with what's being proposed. The proposed amendments to Town Code Chapter 8 and 32 are proposed by staff to prevent the installation of utility facilities and structures above the ground. This all stems from 2018 again, when the town code was amended to allow small wireless facilities and the use and installation of utility poles in accordance with section law 2017-159. And it basically declared that wireless service providers and wireless infrastructure providers must have access to the public rights of way and have the ability to attach poles and structures in the public rights of way to densify their networks. Recently, town staff learned that other jurisdictions have been prohibiting the installation of new utility poles for small, small wireless facilities in town rights of way by adding them to undergrounding requirements. So in your packets, you have a copy of 2203 and you'll see that we're proposing to strike out pretty much all of section 8-27 that refers to our current requirements for underground installation of cable facilities and other utilities. And we're creating a new section 32-13 titled undergrounding requirements that basically states that all utility facilities and structures shall be installed underground. However, they could be, they can't, the ones that would be, the ones that are located there today, as of today, wherever you, when you see the date on line 30, on page two. So if you all were to enact this, the ones that are existing today, they would be allowed to be, they would continue to be used, replaced and maintained, but not expanded unless the expansion is required to be allowed by law. In addition, if utility providers do make a case that they, it's absolutely necessary for them to allow, for us to allow the facilities to be located above the ground, there is a variance procedure in place that they would have to follow. So that would be through the, through the issuance of a variance that would serve as a waiver as provided by the statutes. So that's a brief summary of what's before you with this application.
Thanks, Wes. I know that you're not a telecommunications utilities expert, but my question is, so we had a gentleman speak to cell service in town and- And whether or not the small wireless facilities are improving it or not, I don't know. I don't know if any of the utility providers can even tell us if they are. I will say, there's definitely places in town where you lose cell service. So if we do this, is there any way to know how it would impact cell service?
I don't know off the top of my head at the moment, but if we were to do this, they could still replace existing poles. There are a few poles left in the town along the avenues. They could replace other facilities. But as far as improve, improving the signal, I, I don't know how much of an effect it will have on it. But I think it would have some effect on it because we're telling them that they can't just locate a new pole where they say the service is needed. Unless they somehow prove that there's a hardship and that they are entitled, should be entitled to a variance.
Okay.
So how have they determined the pole at Hickory Trail and, and?
Waxmore.
Waxmore.
We require, the ordinance that we have in place now, it states that they have to demonstrate that they, the service is needed in that area. And their radio, radio frequency engineers and others, they provide documents that show the maps and the signal areas, then we accept that as their documentation.
So did they get permission to put that up or they just?
They obtained town approval to put that in, yes.
And the homeowner, that was in the right of way, the town right of way?
It's in the town right of way, correct.
That is, although I think the first metal pole type, the rest of it all been wood.
That is correct. The, that is the only metal facility. That's the first one I had seen. All the other ones have been your typical wooden utility pole.
Yeah.
But when I say all the other ones, with the exception of one, they've been installed in the NC DOT right of way.
Yeah. That's what I see going up, last week I went to Corolla, and man, there were all kinds of mine noted.
There's one.
But they were wood, but they were in the NC DOT right of way.
Right. Per this, per the session law that came into effect, small wireless facilities and utilities in the state right of way, they are exempt from zoning regulation. We do, we cannot regulate them in NC DOT right of way. This would apply to town right of way only.
Yeah, which is one down here on Spindrift.
To clarify, they can attach to existing poles?
They can attach to existing poles.
And continue to maintain and use that pole?
Yes.
The community decides to take their lines underground on that pole and a small cell device is present, can they stay there?
If, say that again?
If the power lines are taken underground, that that existing pole is servicing and small cell devices on it, would the pole be able to stay under this writing?
Would it?
Um, I would have to say that if the pole was no longer there, then the facility wouldn't no longer be able to be attached to it.
The power lines are no longer used.
The power lines are not used.
Oh, if they got rid of the power lines?
I think, reading it, I think they'd be able to persist.
I think they would be able to stay if they removed the lines, if they were to put facilities on it, because it doesn't necessarily refer to just power lines, it talks about the poles.
How many, we've got Hickory, how many are in the town right of way versus?
New poles?
Yeah.
There's the one at Wax Myrtle and Hickory, then there's the one on the corner of Ninth Avenue.
That's the town, and then there's one at the end of Hickory and Ocean Boulevard.
Hickory and Ocean Boulevard?
Are they attached to an existing pole?
They're the only two that I'm aware of that we've, you know, they're the only two that we've permitted in town, in town right of ways.
What about, is that one that we've approved because isn't there one here on Spindrift? That I wa, I used to walk by it, I don't walk that way anymore. I thought there was a five pole there with the
Not a new.
5G.
We haven't approved any new poles off of Spindrift. And I'm not aware.
This has been sometime, it's been up there for three or four years.
I'm not aware.
Or two or three years.
I'm not aware of any co-locations to any existing poles on Spindrift either.
Oh, okay.
Don't recall anyway.
And the variance procedures, they'd be very similar to any other variance to the town.
Board of Adjustment?
It would go to the Board of Adjustment.
Same hardship.
Correct.
Geographical.
It's following, yes, it's following the same procedure established in that section of the Town Code.
Have you had any pushback from any of the providers on this or are they aware of it?
Have not heard anything from any providers about this. I'm not sure if they're aware or not. I don't know if they read our public notices or newsletters.
I mean, I, I think you would be hard pressed to look at that poll on Hickory and Wax Myrtle and think that that's anything other than unattractive. And some of these other ones are not as bad. But I mean, the, I think the, the legislation was adopted without consideration of the fact that our town is almost all underground utility served. And I don't really, I don't, I haven't seen any data that indicates our self-service has improved since they put up these new poles. I wish we, I wish we knew the answer to that. But honestly, I, I prefer everything to be underground. So I'm kind of in favor of doing this. And if they have to, if we have to get a variance later, we can do it down the road.
It's not exactly also a coverage expansion, it's a bandwidth expansion. So it's, it's as much for data as it is for, I mean, we're not actually targeting new subscribers, we're targeting, trying to get that YouTube video to you just as fast as you wanted it at home.
Well, and, and honestly, wouldn't, wouldn't fiber underground be the better way to provide that to everyone?
Or Starling.
Anyway, again, I'm not a telecommunications expert either. I just know I prefer my utilities to be underground.
This is a legal question, but if they reply for a variance and they express the hardship was because the geographical location that they're trying to seek doesn't meet their coverage requirements, I mean, is that enough of a hardship to just, to meet that variance threshold?
It's hard to say. I mean, I think the factors would be individualized for each application. I think, you know, they would have to show that and it may, it may be different depending on circumstances and different locations.
Yeah. If they, they could put it in DOT, but they want to move it up a hill and, you know.
Well, these are all 5G, am I correct?
No.
Most of them are.
Are or aren't?
They're not currently, but they're, they're dialed in for the 5G radio to come into it.
Yeah. There isn't much 5G here.
Well, I wonder maybe what, I wonder if an unintended consequence of this would be if you cannot build those towers on the tailored streets, would they just line Ocean Boulevard with towers?
The DOT right of way, you mean?
Because they build in the DOT.
Well, they still can't get their geographic, geographic coverage that way.
Yeah, they're not going to increase capacity by doing that.
If you go through the air, you have to have
Yeah.
The scatter. The better way to do it would be fiber underground. If you can achieve what you want, in my opinion.
Do they ever show you all a proposed long-term expansion map?
No. They, they, it's very proprietary, so it's, it's very difficult to get any type of future expansion. You know, ideally, we wanted to sit down with some of these providers and say, okay, here's our town, let's, let's pick places where we can put these. But, you know, one of the providers, you know, they tell me they have no plans in the immediate, immediate future. Another provider seems to be moving at a much quicker pace. There, and there's, you know, we get an engineer, like Wes said, we get a set of plans that says this is where it has to be. It's an engineered seal, it passes everything that, you know, we're told if it has an engineered seal that it, we're not engineers, so we can't question that as much. But then you have another vendor that'll say, well, that, you know, I would, I don't know why they put that there, that pole could have been 200 feet for, you know, the one on Wax Myrtle and Hickory, I think is 400 feet from the DOT right of way. But I think, I think what we're, the way staff's approaching this is this gives you that opportunity to kind of tap the brakes and to say, you know, let's, it gives us an opportunity to have a little bit more say and control over where these poles are located. Right now, with, as it's written, with that engineered seal, these poles could go just about anywhere in town. And, and it's very difficult for us to put the brakes on that. So that, so you're, by requiring these to go underground, and if you were to pass the, the zoning amendment, you have to have the, the waiver. And I, so you still have the ability and the, the, I guess, you, you can make the decision that this pole here is going to be a benefit to our community for the folks that are working from home and need to be able to get the download speed. Mayor Pro Tim, I think is right, this, this is, you know, this was all passed in 2017 with 5G in mind. 5G is going to bring jobs, it's going to bring commerce, it's going to make our state more competitive. And we haven't really seen that, not, not yet. And so I think this is more about the competition, one provider wanting to get a leg up in 5G and be, be better positioned to take away the business from another provider. But I think, I think really and truly, this just gives you the ability to have a little more say and a little more control over the placement of these poles in your town.
Well, and I, I appreciate that very much, Cliff. And also, I think, you know, it would give us the opportunity to interact with the providers and find, and get them to tell us. So how much better is your service now than it was before you put all these really unattractive poles in our town? So I'm, again, of the mindset to go ahead and, and take the staff recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion that we approve TCA?
As I understand it, the providers can just ignore what we do too, right? Is that, is that what this said here? I mean, they can ignore the, the, the resolution that we're talking about. You sure?
No, they, they would have to comply. This, the, you, you, the statute allows you to, and this is what some of the other towns have done, that you can require, if you already have underground requirements at the time this was put in place, and we did, you can require these utility, you can require all utilities to go underground. You have to do it for all, you have to be consistent, and you have to have the waiver. So, so they, with, if you were to approve this without coming forward to convince you, they have to be where they say they have to be, they would, they would be denied.
So they would have to have something similar to an electric box? Or the cable boxes or the phone boxes that are all over town right now? Is that what we're saying?
No.
I'm asking, yeah.
No, it would, I, I think what we're saying is that it's one or the other. It either is completely underground and, and I guess there's, you know, some
Stub up somewhere.
Somewhere. Or you can grant them the 50-foot pole
Yeah.
With all the attachments.
There has to be something above ground, the cell doesn't work below ground. You'd need antennas inside the house. You really do. Okay.
Everybody, okay? I'd like to make a motion that we approve TCA 2203. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ready to vote?
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
There's a, the, the TCA cites the waiver process as a variance, the ZTA says unless the town grants a waiver or variance is, I don't mean to be nitpicky, but I, I feel like I want to give them a little bit better opportunity in actually having a
So the language we need for TCA is utility providers may seek a waiver by filing the variance procedure?
I'm practicing law without license, but I, my point is I don't, the variance procedure is a very, as you know
Yes.
It has a very, I'd rather it be like a conditional use permit or something like that. I mean, have an additional step of review, but not actually have these state legislature level statutes that, that require the variance process. And maybe I'm muddying the water here, just kick me if I'm wrong.
Wes, or Wes, can you help, can you help the mayor Pro Tim?
The, the statute refers to waiver, but what we've seen in other loca, locations is the waiver comes in the form of a variance. And the language you're referring to, it states, that's in the current language, that's in the current ordinance, we're not proposing any changes to it. So I would suggest if you have concern with it, that I would, I would stick with unless the town grants a variance to make it consistent with the TCA.
I'm okay with it, I just think if, if something, they do have a legitimate need, I'm not sure our variance process is going to be good for them to try to get a waiver, if that's what I'm getting at.
Well, if there's concern with that, you could remove variance and go with the word waiver.
And then what would that?
And then how would they get a waiver? Yeah, what's the process?
I don't know the process for that. We'd have to establish a process probably.
Let's go with variance.
I, I don't, the conditional use permitting.
That wouldn't be it. Don't think so.
All right, I'm muddying the waters.
Let's, let's stay with variance, it sounds like easier to ma, manage.
But impossible to get.
Ready to vote? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? TCA 2203 has been approved. Now, we can open a public hearing, so I'll hand it off to Robert.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now open a, a public hearing on the
Might want to close that door, folks.
Post, ZTA 22 dash 03, zoning text amendment, application submitted by the town Southern Shores to amend Town Code Section 36 dash 275.
Sir?
Mark.
We can't close that door.
Thank you.
Wireless telecommunications sites, facilities and towers. At this time, I will call on Wes Haskett to make a presentation on behalf of the town staff.
Thank you again, Mr. Hobbs. Again, this ZTA goes hand in hand with TCA 22 03, which you all just approved. So with this zoning text amendment, the only actual amendments we're proposing are in page three in your packets of the ZTA, where it refers to rights, right of way used to comply with other requirements. And what we're doing there is we're eliminating where it said Chapter 28, that, that was a mistake, we're not sure how that got in there in the first place. But now we're just referring to the undergrounding requirements established in Section 32 dash 13 that you all just adopted. That is the request for this ZTA.
Questions? And it looks like from the report that the planning board unanimously recommended approval at their March 21st meeting.
That's correct.
Questions?
Wes, so just to beat the dead horse a little bit further, where's the reference of waiver in this zoning text amendment?
It's, uh, yes, line 25 on page three or four of the ZTA.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else have a question? Sorry, Robert.
All right, thank you. Okay, would the planning board like to make a presentation? Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public who would like to address this application, please? Come forward and state your name and address.
Thank you. Eric Norrie, 256 Willand Drive. Guess I'm gonna have to channel my inner Kansas here and come with a 15-point comeback after half to see if I can salvage this. I'm not a wireless expert either. I am in the IT field, so I do understand network technology topology. And I don't want to speak too out of turn, but the, the, the concept with cellphone towers are they're micro cells and they're called small units because they cover a small area for the bandwidth concern that you mentioned. So you do unfortunately need a few more of them than a tall, high radio tower like we have at the corner of the triangle, because that's older technology. It doesn't ca, cover as far. So that's kind of why they're introducing these smaller ones. And by the very nature of what it is, it's a wireless technology, putting it underground essentially kills it because you're going to need some sort of aerial antenna to transport the signal to and from all the cells around it. So it does put a, quite a damper on it. Back to my original comments that I had prepared, minus the safety aspects that I made earlier, really wireless service is no longer an indulgence or a luxury, it's a necessity like utility like water, electricity or land-based telephone. I would even consider it part of a town's infrastructure that luckily someone else gets to help pay bill, to build it. However, how we live in a small town where wireless companies have a small number of paying customers, and we're lucky that they're even willing to invest any money into our infrastructure at all, making it more difficult for them in the form of these waivers and variances or whatever is decided, will hurt their ROI and make them less likely to invest in our town, leaving us behind the rest of the state or maybe even the country. The only negative impact I've heard is discussed is aesthetics. I'm trying to go through a few examples of positives that may not be considered relative to the safety comments, comments I made earlier. Reliable internet options. Remember, these cell sites don't just facilitate phone calls, they provide high-speed internet. Everyone has either complained or heard a complaint about internet outages or poor service up and down the beach. In fact, just last week, we had a pretty large spectrum outage that actually put me out of work because I work from home. And my backup plan is connecting to my company-provided cellphone that didn't work because I don't have signal at my house, so I had to take the rest of the afternoon off. the rest of the afternoon off. Luckily, it was a beautiful Friday, and me and the dog went out for a walk. The other option is DSL, which is still in our, in our topology of our community. However, it's not really suitable for a lot of today's data needs, and it's, it's phasing out. Wireless 5G data services can fill this void and is expected to replace land-based internet, copper, underground, in a lot of ways. I already mentioned my work from home. Also, property values, and unfortunately, I think the experts that were here earlier have left, they might be able to comment that, kind of funny to say it now in today's market, however, buyers are going to want solid, reliable 5G services when looking to buy a home. A lot like they do today for good quality water, a good school system. If we have poor service, property values may decrease. In conclusion, I urge you to pause this action and do some further research, have conversations with maybe some wireless consultants, since the providers are hush-hush. Query our first responders in 911 call center and seek their thoughts on safety aspects. Chat with a property appraiser and see if this could be a value-negative impact to our community and make these findings public. Lastly, we don't have existing utility poles west of NC 12. I have not seen anyone walking around. So the co-location element of the language doesn't really apply to us. It would have to be a new construction of a pole. And this is the future of what we're going to have, so kind of what we've discussed tonight is pretty much going to kill, I would think will kill wireless access suspension any further. Also, making the wireless companies go underground, you're actually are, I believe, sorry, I'm going off script here, being a little discriminating against them, because you're literally putting them where they're not going to work. You'd be like telling Dominion to put their lines in the ocean, or worse, her septics on top of the soil. It's not how they are designed, and this CTA purposefully exploits that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms.? Would anybody else like to come forward and make a presentation? You state your name and address.
Yeah, Anthony DiBernardo, Ninth Avenue, 329th. I just have to give a practical aspect to something, you're talking about variances. I live on Ninth Avenue. I just had a pole installed on Ninth Avenue. I've never had bad service on Ninth Avenue. I've gone from the ocean, up the sea oats, through that whole area, 10th, 8th, Hickory, Hillcrest, I've never not had service. And they just installed. Okay, they installed. I'm very curious when they turn it on, if it's going to affect anything. But the, the practical aspect right now, I think a variance is something that you should look at, because they installed something on the corner of Ninth Avenue. I don't know why it was installed. I've never had bad service, never. So I, this is just kind of a practical, to give you some, this is happening to me, and it's there, it's there, you know? I'm not arguing that it's there, I'm just saying, I don't know why it's there. And I really think that it has to be looked at when they apply for something like this, and really look at where the service is. And I think that a variance would help with that, so they could state their case. That's all. Just thought to give you a practical of what's going on.
Any questions?
Is that Paul, or actually on Ninth, or is it sitting at the corner of Ninth and Duck?
So DOT right of way, right?
It, it's, it's in the right of way, on Ninth Avenue. Why they put it?
Town's right of way?
Town right of way.
Town's right of way. Why they did it, if they moved it over a couple feet, it would have been in
DOT.
DOT's right of way, but for some reason, who knows? They moved it in, and it's actually in the town right of way.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address this application? Seeing none, any remaining questions from council?
Well, I, I just a comment or a question, I guess, based on the poll there, didn't we have to approve that, or do you know? Yes.
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, this time, we will close the public hearing. As a reminder, council, you're sitting as a, as a legislative body, and in order to adopt this ordinance on the first reading, you'll need to have four votes in favor. Otherwise, if you approve it with less than four, then we'll come back to you at a second reading. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. I appreciate Eric's comments about, we don't want to do anything to make wireless phone service worse than it is. We, we also have unreliable internet, which seems atrocious in 2022 that we're still having these issues with. And just to give you some background, not long after I was sworn in, I started having meetings with a resident and town staff about this very issue. Why is our internet so bad? Why is it so? And we've, so we've actually done, done some talking, done some, you know, some research. The problem is, we can't get any provider to really communicate with us. You know, they, they don't have to, because we're this, as you pointed out, we're this tiny little community, and they don't have to really pay attention to us. And, and that's the problem. We're, we're, the, the statute was passed, and when I was on the planning board, we, we put it in the ordinance, because we were told that we basically had no choice. They passed the statute without taking into consideration the impact to local communities, who are almost all underground utilities, which is what we are here in Southern Shores. So we passed it, because our attorney told us to do that, so that's, that's what we did. Now, other towns didn't do that. They, they went with the underground option. Are there, is their cell service any worse or better than ours? I don't think so. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I also would like the opportunity to be heard by the providers. I would also like the opportunity for better internet, but that's not what we're talking about tonight. So I'm, I'm in favor of passing this. If, if nothing else, maybe they'll pay attention to us. If we have to fix it, I always say that, if we have to fix it later, we, we can, we can have a waiver process, or we can redo the ordinance. That's where I am with it. Any other council members want to say anything? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the sort, the
CTA.
CTA, ZTA.
22-02.
No.
Oh, three.
2203.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? ZTA 2203 has passed. Thank you, council. We are two hours into our meeting, and I would like to call a very, very short recess if we still intend to finish the rest of our agenda, which I believe staff would like us to do. So, could we just take a very short break and be back in like five, five, six minutes max? Thank you.
Thank you for that short break. We're now to item 12 on our agenda, solid waste, trash and recycle. Page eighty-one, council, in your books. Cliff, did you? There is no Cliff.
Where did Cliff, where did Cliff go?
We lost Cliff. Wes, will you step in and lead us forward?
Here, he's coming.
Wes can handle it.
I will try, and if not, then our town manager can come over.
Excellent, thank you.
The next item on your agenda is bay disposal contract renewal for trash. The current contract will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Contract states that will automatically terminate at midnight on June thirty, twenty twenty-two unless the town elects to renew under negotiated terms and conditions. Bay disposal has no objections to renewing the contract with the term expiration of June thirty, twenty twenty-three with a six percent increase compared to what we have in effect now. That would be five fifty-nine per unit to five ninety-three per unit for residential and four thousand three fifty-two twenty-five per month to four thousand six thirteen thirty-nine per month for commercial. The six percent increase can be attributed to the recent CPIU rating of seven point nine percent. And we believe that six percent is a fair increase as opposed to seven point nine percent.
Thanks, Wes.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have any questions for Wes?
Are they still going to have separate pickups for recycle versus trash?
We have separate pickups, recycle.
Monday for trash and Wednesday for recyc.
Yeah, for, for solid waste, it'd be Mondays and Fridays. Recycling's been Wednesdays, but we're looking at switching them to Fridays. The bay disposal's agreed to switch recycling to Friday, so during, during the season, we're talking about solid waste right now, but we're not changing, we're not talking about changing the days for solid waste. Those days will remain the same. What's that?
We're just talking about the renewal of the contract.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So the contract, as I understand it, cause, calls for an automatic increase according to whatever the consumer price index increase is. But this year, because of extraordinary circumstances, the CPI is at seven point nine. But Bay has agreed to give us a six, well, give, land on six percent increase instead of seven point nine.
The solid waste contract does call for going to at least the CPIU. But in this case, bay disposal, they, they proposed the six percent.
Six percent, okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Wes?
No.
I move to renew the solid waste contract with bay disposal.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Page eighty-nine, the contract renewal for recycling. Pretty much the same story, I think.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And in this case, six percent increase would be five twenty-one per unit to five fifty-two per unit. Again, same exact situation. They are proposing six percent, CPIU rating, seven point nine percent. It's not necessarily in the contract like it is in the solid waste contract, but we still think it's fair.
Okay. So what, there, there is no contract for recycling, it's just?
We have contract for recycling, but the CPIU rating reference is not in the recycling contract like it is in the solid waste contract.
Gotcha.
It does not have that same provision.
It just says a, a new rate will be negotiated with the town?
In fact, basically, yes, ma'am. The town, either, either party, either party can negotiate when this renewed, or both parties will negotiate. But there are other things that could be, either party could look into as far as changing the price if they wanted to.
Well, and, and everyone can recall that we've had some real challenges with recycling over the last several years. It's a little bit better now than it used to be. But it's definitely been challenging. So I'm very glad that we have recycling in a healthy, more healthy state now.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna add. I mean, I, I see it in the budget, I just want to clarify, the landfill tipping fees are still paying direct and recycling tipping fees were still paying direct costs. It's not a six percent increase.
Everything's, yeah, that stays the same.
It's just the servicing of.
Yes, the service.
Yeah, it's a different line item.
Not recycling.
Yeah.
This is just bay disposal's trucks.
Just the one eighty-four and the fifty-two, it's gonna go up six percent.
This is, yes, for the collection and delivery of the recyclables to RDS.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we renew the bay disposal contract for recycling.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, consideration of TCA twenty-two oh two. Oh, boy. Trying to find page.
One hundred.
Page one hundred. Wes, you're getting a workout tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Loving it.
Okay.
Last item, at the February first, twenty twenty-two council meeting, Chairperson Ward presented the planning board suggested improvements to Town Code Chapter twenty-six, solid waste. And council directed town staff to draft a town code amendment that included recommended amendments to chapter twenty-six. Town staff submitted TCA two-two dash zero two to council at your, for your March ninth, twenty twenty-two council meeting, and you all provided feedback on recommended amendments. The March thirty-one twenty-two draft of that TCA addresses some of the improvements suggested by the planning board as well as other recommended amendments from town staff and council. In your packet, I included a sheet that says, planning board suggested improvements to solid waste ordinance. And below that, it's other suggested revisions by town staff. The other part that was included in your packet is the actual TCA. Would you, if you'd like, I can go through all of the changes on the planning board and staff suggested revisions, or I'm available to answer questions, however you all would like to do it.
Just go through the revisions of the actual ordinance.
Mayor Pretend is suggesting that we would like you to lead us through the revisions as presented by staff.
Okay. With respect to the planning board suggested improvements, one of the first ones was to replace should with shall in several areas within the ordinance.
Sorry, I just meant the actual text of what we'd be considering here.
I'm sorry?
Just the actual ZTA.
The actual ZTA.
The changes, the actual text changed the ordinance. I'm sorry. I'll shorten that a little bit.
Okay.
So.
Starting on page two of seven.
Yes.
We are removing the requirement that property owners purchase one receptacle from the county department of public works. That's no longer in effect at one time, they did have, that was required. And then also obtain for a fee, one recycling receptacle from the town. That's no longer in practice, so we're proposing to delete that. And instead, just they provide receptacles in accordance with section twenty-six dash six that meet the requirements of this chapter. Section B, we're also, again, removing the reference to purchasing receptacles, or bulk containers in this case, rather, from the county department of public works or a private contractor. And we're just simply stating that owners or tenants of commercial establishments shall provide a bulk container approved by the town. Taking twenty-six dash five A, further on down, this is where it addresses the number and placement and maintenance of receptacles. We are now proposing, instead of having to place receptacles, residential receptacles within the right-of-way of the improved streets in the town, three feet, within three feet of the paved portion of the street on designated collection days. Three feet of clearance shall be left around the container. And solid waste and recyclable materials placed outside of receptacles will not be collected and subject to civil penalty in accordance with section twenty-six dash twenty. Therefore, that clarifies and makes it clear that it is a violation for folks to leave materials around the receptacles. And B, we are putting in place that receptacles should be placed in the street wide, street right-of-way not sooner than twenty-four hours prior to collection. And that they should be moved out of the right-of-way prior to midnight following each collection. Feedback from the planning board, at one point, they suggested or recommended that shall should be in place and not should. We discussed this at the, at your last, the March ninth meeting as well, so we're happy to hear any feedback you have on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say that I think we should stick with replacing the shoulds to shalls. And yes, I, I recognize that we have some enforcement challenges, but I really think it, it just provides us the, the ability to enforce, because we have the ordinance written in a way that it should be. So I would recommend that we change both of those shoulds to shalls. I don't know how anybody else feels, but that's the way I feel about it.
Let's get to the rest of the changes.
Okay.
Very good. Lastly, on this page, this is page two of seven, every residential receptacle should be labeled with a town sticker. This is to help with education outreach. The version that, again, the version you all had for March ninth or your retreat, that said shall, we did change that to should based on your feedback. Page three of seven, residential receptacles shall have fully functional lids that cover the entire receptacle. This came from the planning board. Residential receptacles shall have fully functional wheels. That was discussed at the planning board, but we as town staff thought that if we're gonna address the lids, we might as well address the wheels to make sure everything on it is functioning the way as it should. Section twenty-six dash six, this is the determination of receptacle size and number. At your retreat, you all saw a different set of numbers. We felt that those numbers of required receptacles were excessive. And also, at that time, this TCA, TCA did not distinguish between rental units and residential units. Now, in this version, we are leaving residential units the same with having to have one recycled receptacle and one solid waste receptacle. For units for rent, instead of two solid waste receptacles, they have to provide three for residential units of four bedrooms or less offered for vacation rentals. And then, and they also would have to provide, have to provide two recycling receptacles instead of one. So that would be four bedrooms or less. If you have five or more bedrooms for rent, we are increasing the number of solid waste receptacles from three to five, and recycling receptacles from one to three. And lastly, in that same section, twenty-six dash six A, gives the, the town manager the authority to require a dumpster if he determines that more receptacles were required to accommodate the materials generated at a property. We know of at least one area in the town where this might be necessary. This will give him the authority to do so. Moving down, twenty-six dash nine B, we are deleting recyclable material list reference due to the fact that our solid or recycling contractor provides that information. And we think it's easier to just keep it limited to information that we can provide as we receive it from our contractor. Subsection D, this is on page four, line number fifteen and sixteen, we're taking out or the reference to the title of the recyclable materials stating that it transfers from the owner to the town. It does not any longer, it transfers to the town's authorized agent. Twenty-six dash eleven, notice of violation or nonconformity. Violations shall be subject to a civil penalty in accordance with section twenty-six dash twenty, which we will get to in a moment. Section twenty-six dash twelve, line nine, deleting no yard trimming waste, leaves, tree and strawberry trimmings shall be placed within the right-of-way or on the paved portion of any street. And that's because further down, it states that yard trimming waste can be in the right-of-way for chipping, approved chipping materials. The next change would be on page six, and this is with respect to enforcement and penalties. And this basically changes our current enforcement procedure so that if there's any violation of any provision in this chapter, the first notice of violation would be a warning citation. Following issuance of a warning citation, if there's another violation, the property owner of record will be assessed a penalty in the amount of fifty dollars. The next violation, it would be one hundred dollars, and then every violation after that in a twelve-month period would be one hundred and fifty dollars for each offense. And that concludes the changes, Mayor Pretend, Mayor Council.
And Wes? Any questions for Wes?
Who's gonna, who's gonna enforce this?
We will do our best. We will do our best. Public Works, they do help out with, they have been out in the town lately fixing stickers on receptacles that would, the stickers that we had produced with the assistance of bay, bay disposal, financial assistance. But we're hoping that if, and I know y'all are going to discuss this after this, the rollback service, if that's done, then hopefully that would reduce the amount of time needed to enforce, especially in the main problem area that everyone's been speaking of. But myself, I, I do code enforcement, we have building inspector, code enforcement officer. The police department and public works, they can pass on information to town staff as they see things. And if, if needed, but it, we are limited to an extent of the manpower for enforcement. That's all I have for that.
We're passing something that wouldn't have any teeth.
It has teeth, or I think that by adopting this. I'm sorry?
It's got teeth, but it's unenforceable.
I would say that the should instead of shall would be unenforceable. But as far as, with, without.
They're gonna look at it on Monday and Friday, is that what they're gonna do, to see who's got the lids on them? And I mean, I just think we're opening up a can of worms here that's huge.
It would be.
It's just gigantic.
Right.
Residents, non-residents, visitors, non-visitors, it's, it's all over the board here. If you have an Airbnb, is that considered to be a rental?
Yes.
Sure.
Airbnbs are rentals.
Okay, so those are back in the residential areas.
Yes, sir.
But they're rentals.
But they're rentals, just like weekly rentals.
Yeah, they're daily rentals.
Or they're.
Two days, I mean, but they're back in the residential areas too, they're just not on Ocean Boulevard.
Right.
Okay. The rollback penalty is only for Ocean Boulevard, right?
No, it's everywhere.
It's everywhere.
Has to be applied uniformly.
The rollback service also, if it were to put in, if it was put into effect, they would also assist with enforcement by notifying us of problems. They also, or when I had a conversation with bay disposal earlier on about having a rollback service get involved, they said that they'd be willing to work with them as well. They would communicate on issues, so.
Well, I, I guess I would say, I think the planning board has been working on this for quite a while, and we've been working on it for quite a while. And it's time to either pass this or not pass it. My only hesitation, and I'm fine with it, my only hesitation, and it's probably my background, is I don't know how you enforce something that's a should. I mean, I would have a big argument with enforcing something that's a should. You know, you should do this, you shouldn't do that. Shall is a different animal. Shall is enforceable, the ordinance says you shall do this, if you, you shall do this, if you don't do it, there's a penalty. If you're saying you should do it, well, you know, there's a lot of wiggle room in that, so that, that would be my agreement with the mayor. If, if there's something that's important enough to this town in terms of cleanliness and appearance, and we're going to attach a penalty to it, then it should be a shall. I think it'll make your job not a whole lot easier, perhaps a bit.
In, in some lines, it clearly states it's a subject of civil penalty, but like line B, we're talking about changing it should to shall, it doesn't mention a civil penalty. So it says shall, I mean, this is really, like, I'm kind of with you, Mark, a little bit, but if it says shall, they don't roll the car, car back, does this ordinance allow us to find them? Or are they going out too early, or are they?
Any violation of chapter twenty-six would be, potentially, we could find them in accordance with the section outline in section twenty-six dash.
So when it's specifically cited in like twenty-six five A, that's just for redundancy or driving the point home?
Yes.
Well, and we also have the option of communicating to individuals that aren't, aren't complying with certain sections of this code, like with a letter, like a notice. We don't have to immediately jump to a penalty, correct?
Correct, we, we have the discretion, I mean, but it would start with the warning citation, but if we were to adopt this ordinance, it states that the owner shall be subject to a civil penalty. So the warning citation would be the, the warning. I mean.
And then we shall find them.
In code enforcement, there are also issues where a phone call sometimes goes a long way.
Yes, indeed.
It says you shall deliver them a notice.
Following issuance of a warning citation.
I'm just teasing.
Following issuance of a warning citation.
Well, but I think.
How much extra work?
But we're either serious about doing this or we're not. Either we're going to tell people, you know, this is unsightly, you've got to address it, the rental companies should pay a little attention to this, let their renters know.
Agreed.
We don't want our town, particularly these rental properties, with trash cans overflowing. Either that, we're either gonna do something or we're just gonna say, okay, this is just the way it is.
The reason I like should is because sometimes I leave town on a Thursday night or whatever, and I wanna roll my cart out and leave it in my driveway so I don't come home with a stinky food on Tuesday. So I don't wanna get a notice of violation from the town.
If you're a habitual offender.
I think if it's a shall, I get, I'm subject to civil penalty in accordance with section twenty-six, six, six dash twenty.
But you get a warning letter first.
I can correct the issue, right?
Yeah.
Then the next trip out of town.
Or you can just be friends with your neighbor and ask them to take care of your.
Unoccupied houses.
Go for it, Bryce, I'll come up.
Yeah, Leo's, Leo's good for that.
There's already a lot of staff chasing their tail. I, I would advocate keeping it as a should, and I understand your point one hundred percent, that it has more compulsory faith force with it being shall, but I don't want neighbors calling on neighbors and taking up staff time.
I have to, again, well, party's in my piece, okay. Leo?
Well, I'm struggling with it. You know, we put it in place, and then we say, okay, we get the shell or should, we can argue about that all day. But, okay, somebody violates all the time, we send him all the letters, we send them all the complaints, we find him and they, and they don't do anything. Now who's gonna follow up and collect from this? And then somebody's gonna get obstinate and says, okay, I'll, we'll meet in court somewhere. Well, then you got other money spent, I, I just. And then I look at it as, as I walked around, we've got containers that don't have lids on them. How are we gonna get that in place? We can say shall, but they said, no, I'm not gonna do it. Or the wheels, that's easy to come by, the lids, there's another story. Or you'll get where they'll place it out there, and we get a windstorm and then the lids blow open. And they started out properly with the lids on or closed. So I, 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 I just struggle. I know we gotta do something, 'cause I see the mess all the way walking out here on twelve, and you'll see containers in various shapes. And, you know, are we gonna say, okay, mister property owner or mister rental property, property manager, you, you gotta buy a new can at ninety bucks? How are we gonna enforce that?
Well.
Who's gonna do it?
I guess I'll, I'll backtrack enough to say that if, if our staff recommendation is to leave should, and they think they can make that work, we can do it for a while and see how it works. it works. And if it, if it doesn't, you know, if it doesn't work as should, then we'll switch back to shall. But I think we need to put some closure on this.
Especially if we're, I'm not saying we are, but there's a rollback service.
Well, that's the next one. That's the next one down. The rollback would be one part of it. I just see, you know, the containers, we put this in effect and somebody's, you know, they don't have the lids on them. I've seen containers where they, they started out with the lids on them, then the wind blew them open.
Okay, so I'm gonna backtrack too, taking Paula's lead. And we have the shall for the lid, because I think that's important. We have a shall for the wheels. Yeah, okay, because you gotta get the bin out to the street.
I'd be more stringent on asking for wheels.
So wheels and lids are shals, and everything else can stay a should as recommended by staff, so I'll just backtrack and say, okay. Because I want to pass something that's better than what we have now, and I think this is it.
I was gonna say, I'd like to make a motion to adopt TCA 22-02 as written, and as part of, not as part of that motion, but as comment. You know, this started with Mr. D. Bernardo coming to us and saying, look, there's a lot of stuff that's saying buy the garbage can from the county and all that stuff, and I think they've done a good job modernizing it and addressing some of the concerns, and I'm happy with it as written.
I'll second the motion.
I'll just say, I'm not completely happy, but I'm happier than I was before, and I want to thank Tony and the planning board and staff for all the work and for putting up with us. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That's the passage of TCA 22-02. Okay, as we go towards the midnight hour, we are on, let's see, consideration of rollback service. Would that be Cliff? Oh, good.
He sounded excited on that.
Okay, so I'll try, this could be a, this could be a short discussion or it could be a long discussion, but I'll try and limit mine short. So...
Twelve minutes, the ultimate wager.
There's a company that named Trash Detail that organized several years ago in response to this very issue. They saw the opportunity to help with, you know, it's, they're entrepreneurs, we can, we can help you by rolling the carts back. If the issue is the unsightly carts in the right of way, then one approach to this is to get them rolled out and hiring someone like Trash Detail to, you're probably gonna get better results with just rolling them back. You know, we, for $20,000, you can have them roll back for the entire summer and it's done, or we can try to enforce an ordinance that you've already not passed. So the way this comes down is there's, if we move our recycling to Friday, we're now picking up, we're servicing Monday and Friday. And so if we were to hire somebody to roll these carts back, we can, we can hire them to roll the carts after they're picked up on Monday morning and on Friday morning. If we just did those two days to roll them back out of the right of way, it's about $9,000 if we were to go from the southern end of town up to Hickory on Ocean Boulevard, both sides of Ocean Boulevard up to Hickory. It would obviously be about half of that if we were to simply go to where the road splits. So we have the options here to kind of tailor this the way we want it to go. So I'm kind of starting with the full, and then we can work back. Those two things make the most sense to me if we're gonna do this. It gets a little bit more difficult if we were to hire them to actually roll the cart from the right of way to the street on pickup, the night before pickup. So if we're picking up trash on Monday, we can hire them to roll the cart from the right of way to the street to be, on Sunday evening, to be picked up on Monday. I don't think that's realistic. The property managers have said, they tell their cleaners to roll the cart to the street when they're done cleaning. And so I think it's gonna be very difficult for us to, at least starting this June, to break them of that habit. That if we could do this, we could pay the same thing for pickup on Friday morning for trash and recycling. Trash Detail will actually roll the carts from the property owner's side of the right of way out to the street to be picked up. So the idea being, you know, the property managers, renters, don't touch the carts, we'll handle it for you. But again, I just, I don't, I don't think it's going to, you know, it's going to happen. Now, the thing I'll say about rolling the carts back on Friday morning, if we pay somebody to roll these carts back on Friday morning, within 24 hours, the property manager or someone's gonna roll, or the cleaner's gonna roll them right back out. So I'm not sure we're getting a whole lot of juice for the squeeze by doing that. So what probably makes the most sense if we're gonna do this is to hire, now that we're theoretically, carts will be not in the, out by the road from Monday to Friday because we're not picking up on Wednesday, to hire Trash Detail to roll the carts back on Monday. They sit there until Thursday evening when they get rolled out for pickup. So there's, there's, you can do one day, you can do four days, you can do part of the town, you can do all the town. There's several different ways to do this. My recommendation would be to start with a Monday, Friday rollback, at least this summer to see how that works, and that would come at a cost of just about $9,000 to do the full length that I mentioned. The other question you guys had previously about this was who pays for this? If, if we're only offering this service to the property owners along Ocean Boulevard, we can charge, we can actually send them an invoice for this. If we were to do the full stretch, it'd be about $35 per homeowner for the four months to roll these, these cans back. But I, if I stood here and told you we'd get $35 from every one we invoice, that's just not, that's not gonna happen. And so to collect on a $35 bill is going to cost us a whole lot more to pay the attorney to go after that $35, just like it would for the notice of violation that, you know, if you, if you put a lien or, or, you know, go after someone to collect the penalties, it's, it's, those penalties need to be pretty high before it makes sense to go and collect them. This not, you don't have to do this at all. I mean, you can, you can, you know, lean on us to better educate and to, you know, to take an educational approach from this and, and do that for this summer. But Trash Details, you know, they're, if you decide you want to do this, they can start as early as this June.
What did the rental manager say? I mean, if, if the carts are, if they're picked up on Friday and new people come, why would they roll them back on Saturday?
Check out Saturday, and the cleaners clean the house on Saturday morning, the cleaner is told to roll the cart.
So there's that much debris left in the house?
Right.
A lot of them are using Friday pickup too.
They just don't take them out.
That's when the renters clean up the icebox.
They just don't take them out.
They start throwing stuff out on Friday night.
They didn't want to carry it home.
And do we have a sense of specifically on Ocean Boulevard where the problems are? Are they, are they more towards the south end, like below, like, like south of the split? Or is it, is it the problem north of the split on Ocean Boulevard? I mean, do we have any kind of sense of where the problems are?
South of the split.
South of the split.
I mean, that's what I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess it, if we're trying to, if we're approaching this from an aesthetic standpoint, and you got 13,000 cars driving through on Saturday morning, and you want to, if you're doing this for the appearance of the town, then it makes the most sense to do it to the split. Now, I don't know how, you know, the percent of cans that are left out, I don't know. But it would, as a start, I think, from the aesthetic standpoint, where if we went from the south end of town to the split, that probably makes sense.
I drove Saturday morning just to see what it looked like up and down, and it was overflowing. There was, at the rentals, like Transcendence and the other, but other homes too, okay, there was overflowing trash, the carts were close together, they were askew at most places, and it went all the way to Hickory is what it did. There were, there were fewer up there, but there was still, there was still trash out. And these guys will put the trash in the can as they're rolling it back.
That's right.
Is that right? Because they're not gonna get out of the truck and pick it up.
Right. The Trash Detail on, if they're rolling a cart back Monday and it's empty and there's trash on the ground, they'll put it in the can.
Yeah, but they'll do that on Monday, they'll do it on, if you do a rollback on Friday too, they will as well, which will help it out. And you're gonna have to roll back Friday, you're gonna have the recycled cans sitting out there.
Right, they'll do both.
I mean, because that's, that's out there too. So, I mean, I just had to see for myself, and I just, I drove all the way, the whole length, one way or the other, just to make sure, you know, we had something to talk about. And even with this, and it was not a lot of people here last week, but now we're getting into spring break, you're gonna see more of the homes here. Especially made, they'll start loading up. So it's gonna be out there.
Well, I guess what I would favor is if we wanted to try this, to try it in some minimal way, as far as a financial commitment, because maybe we're gonna say, this just doesn't work. Or maybe we say, this is great.
Yeah, I was thinking something along the lines of authorizing the town manager up to a certain amount of money and then let him decide what he thinks is working or not.
I don't want to do this at all. I think it's a waste of taxpayer money. But part of that presentation we listened to this morning, keep painting the town, keep beautifying, I could be convinced, but tiptoe into it, and I'd say Monday morning only.
I didn't hear you.
And then we can measure the success of that.
Tiptoe into this and only rollback on Monday.
Provide some flexibility?
No. Budget's already gonna be a pain this year. A pain. And, you know, we're, and then the other part of that is I don't, I don't know that we should charge the individual homeowners. I mean, if we're doing this with beautification of the town based upon complaints from larger groups in the town, then we should just take care of it as a town.
And I think that's what he was suggesting.
Yeah. That's what you would like, you don't want to send a bill to every individual owner.
Well, here again, you send the bill, but if you don't get any response...
Elizabeth, I mean, if you want to give them flexibility, that's fine. I just, I don't really want to talk about it anymore, so I want to not give them flexibility and just say, you're gonna do Monday, that's my compromise, and I'm okay with it beyond. But I will be more flexible than that.
The whole idea here is Saturday looks like trash.
And we're not fixing that.
Everybody's coming in, and if we don't get it picked up on Friday, it's gonna look like garbage on Saturday. I mean, that's the whole...
Saturday and Sunday.
And Sunday too, yeah. I mean, you know, because it's gonna sit out there.
A lot of, I think part of the contributing, I mean, God, we talked too much about this week, but a lot of those cans stay out there all week.
Yeah.
So we're moving them back for rental agencies on Monday. At least they're not there all week. I mean, I'd like to see a private sector solution to this problem.
Me too. Here, here. All right, for, so for now, because we can always do a budget authorization if we decide to change our mind, could we just decide on a, say, a $10,000 or $15,000 limit? Let's say $10,000.
Roll back on Monday. You got five grand.
All right, you want to tiptoe in with $5,000?
Well, I mean, first of all, we're gonna adopt a new budget June 30th.
Right.
We're really just trying to fund through that point.
You're gonna fund June.
Yeah.
Yeah, essentially.
Okay, so $5,000?
Memorial Day is late too.
One day?
I don't know. I don't know what you're gonna do with that. Did you make a motion?
I haven't made a motion. I mean, I would like to just say, so you have clear instruction, staff has clear instruction Monday morning. I said I'd be flexible, maybe I won't. If we gave Cliff, what would you, what would you prefer as mayor?
I'd, well, I'd prefer to start, be able to, to not come back, because I don't think you want to talk about this anymore.
No, we don't.
To be able to, to, up to $10,000 to, with Monday and Friday up to Hickory and work back from there.
Yeah.
I'd be in favor of that.
Yes.
Starting with Monday to the split.
I'd just like to see if we're observing any change with just one day before we go ahead and spend a ton of money. Now, if there's reasons to like engage the subcontractor early so he knows his workload and stuff like that, I get, I get that.
Yeah, I mean, who's gonna do this for $5,000?
I'd rather rollback be on Friday because that's when all the trash is.
Did somebody make a motion?
Yeah.
I would like for the town manager to really resolve this. So I'll move that we allocate $10,000 for the purpose of initiating some sort of rollback service for this summer, and then we evaluate how helpful it is.
We're authorizing the town manager to make these decisions.
Yes.
And we will, and report back, and we'll decide later if we want to change our minds. I will second that motion.
Do you want to bring us a budget amendment next meeting?
So we have a motion and a second, and we have a question. Budget amendment next meeting?
Do you just want to bring a budget amendment?
I mean, if we're only talking about June, we shouldn't be talking more than 2,500 and you got it. We'll fund it.
You won't need one.
I like it even better.
All right.
Let's vote.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Get it off the table.
Motion carries.
Thank you. What's the criteria for success?
Nope, sorry, can't, can't get, can't do that yet. You'll have to wait till council business. General public comment?
None.
Seeing none, they've all left. Any council comments? Mark?
I'm good.
Leo?
I'm just giving you an update on the tourism board. Meal collections for January was down 1%, and that's the same, because it's a calendar year, so it's the same thing for current year-to-date. Occupancy was up 43%, so that's what it was for, that was January '22 over '21. And '22 was, or '21 was a pretty good number, so that's a pretty good change. The big change for y'all, but the park service gave an update of what they had to deal with this summer, and they were, almost had four million visitors down there. And believe it or not, Wright Brothers Memorial had 489,192, and all that flows around through the whole area. So the campsite is what is interesting. Campsites reserved at Cape Hatteras National Steve Shore was up 58%. So, and their staff didn't change much, so everybody's experiencing the pain of how we handle this volume. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Leo. Matt?
Thank you, everybody. You guys get the door prize.
Paula?
My only comment is to thank my granddaughter for being so patient and to remind you that this is how...
Go to Casa, Grandma.
This is, this is how local government works. It's not always a pretty process.
And she's blushing.
Thanks, Paula. I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Sheila, can I take these home and give them to you tomorrow? Oh, you're a blessing.